All right, if we can get all council members to the dais, we're going to start in about one minute. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and call the city council meeting for April 15th to order with the record reflected starting time of 7:02. And with that, Clerk Sow, would you please take the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Koss.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glue.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent, and with that, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, and before we do the pledge in the moment of meditation, are the folks we need to remember as part of tonight's moment of meditation, Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure you all will join me in asking that we keep the family and friends of Alfreda Schmidt in our thoughts as we pause to reflect this evening. Alfreda leaves behind a remarkable life and legacy. She was a beacon of light in our community, and her 97 years on this earth, she left a profound impact on our city and beyond. She wasn't just a name, she was the epitome of selflessness and activism. Through her tireless efforts spanning nearly a century, she became synonymous with positive change, embodying the spirit of community service. Her passing leaves a void that cannot be easily filled, but her memory and acts of service will continue to inspire all of us. Alfreda served on this body from 1981 to 1993, representing the South Side in Ward II, in addition to her time on the Ingham County Commission. She was well-known for her passion and acts of service for our veterans, and also her collection of nearly 100 hats that you'd never see her without. To me, she was a mentor and a friend. Several times, I was invited over to her dining room for a very formal coffee and tea presentation with cookies, and enjoyed every minute of the conversations I had with her through the years. I met her one time at a political event in 2008. She chastised me for my differing of opinions, but we never had a course word after that. We've memorialized her name on our Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, but her legacy also lives on in the countless acts of service and lives seats she touched throughout this century on earth. Again, I ask that you keep her family and friends in your thoughts during this moment of reflection, and as they in our community mourn her loss and celebrate her life.
Well said. Do we have others that we need to remember tonight? Mayor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I concur with everything Peter said, and I appreciate it. Alfreda was my neighbor for many years in Sycamore Park, when she lived there before she moved into the assisted living, and just a wonderful friend. We saw her as recently as a few weeks ago. She was at my State of the City, and she had told me that she was looking forward to seeing her husband again. So I thought that was sweet, and she has been able to do that now. I also would like us to remember Ken Harrow. He is an active member, was an active member, at the Key Hilaat Israel Temple on the South Side. His wife, Liz, will be mourning and sitting shiva, but I hope we will keep their family in our thoughts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carter, sorry.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. I also would like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Spatafor, but also with Ms. Alfreda. I've met her over 14 years ago at a South Lansing Business Association meeting for the first time, and the energy that that woman had, I will never forget. She has inspired me to continue to do what I do. I always cherish her hugs every time she comes in and greets me. But so she would definitely be missed, and my heart and prayers go to her family and those of Lansing that she's touched.
All right, do we have any others? All right, if you would please join us at a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
You have your approval of the council proceedings of April 8th.
Councilman Koss.
I would move the minutes as written.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute and recognition of workers Memorial Day.
Councilman Spatafor.
Sure. Do we have Peyton Kaiser with us this evening? Peyton, could you join us in the well, and I think the mayor's got a tribute as well. Peyton, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Of course. So we have a resolution here from the city council stating whereas every year on April 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. And whereas in 2022, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that 5,486 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job, a 5.7% increase from 2021. On average, in 2022, a worker died nearly every 96 minutes from a work-related injury. 139 workers were lost through fatal workplace accidents in Michigan. And whereas it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured, disabled, or have died as a result of workplace accidents. And whereas we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions. And whereas recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state is necessary. And whereas the Lansing City Council wishes to pay tribute to the workers who have died, been injured, or disabled in workplace accidents. We honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased workplace safety. And whereas the Lansing City Council renews efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and by redirecting ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby recognize April 28th, 2024, as Workers Memorial Day in the City of Lansing, and encourage City of Lansing residents to become educated and informed about programs, services, opportunities to support a safe work environment. I do move the resolution, Mr. President.
Fantastic. There's a motion on the floor, further discussion, comments, questions, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
This is for you all to...
Mayor Shaw.
I'm not going to repeat all of that. We have a proclamation, we have much the same, because we also want to honor our workers that have passed as part of Workers Memorial Day. This is something we do, for those watching at home, it's something we try and do every year, because every year, this is something we should do to recognize our workers that have really been the lifeblood of our community, and those that have fallen during workplace problems, really. So I'm not going to read this all, but the fun part at the end is, now therefore I, Andy Shaw, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024, as Workers Memorial Day in Lansing, and I encourage all to honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce, especially those who have lost their lives. This is for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to thank the council for passing this resolution, and thank Mr. Mayor. It's a very somber day coming up on the 28th, so it's very important. I just have a couple statistics I'd like to share with everyone. According to the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics, 5,486 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job, 5.7% increase from 2021. On average, workers died nearly every 96 minutes for a work-related injury in 2022. In 2022, 139 workers lost their lives in the workplace in Michigan. Lansing has always been a working-class town, and a rich history of celebrating their workers, and through a history of manufacturing in diverse communities. So we just want to thank the community. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on community development block grant annual action plan for fiscal year 2024-25, and are you going to roll these together?
Yes. I think we can, well, no, let's do number three, because then we'll actually bring up Ms. Edgerly. Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did pass a resolution to have a hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2024-2025. We had a pretty lengthy presentation talking about our action plan. It's a funding strategy, as you're all aware, for the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs that we do this annually. This year's 2024 presentation has been prepared in response to a consolidated process developed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the CDBG program. The annual action plan is a document for the city, which outlines how program funds will be expended during the funding cycle, and it provides a basis for assessing performance. Tonight's hearing is to allow for public input on that. City of Lansing anticipates an estimated funding allocation of $2.07 million for CDB funding, $833,000 in home funding, and $181,000 in ESG funding for the 2024 program year, which begins on July 1st.
All right, we appreciate that. Ms. Kimmel, do you have anything to add to that? No? Okay, fantastic. All right, we appreciate that. And then to number four.
Yeah, so this is the CDBG Coronavirus Small Business Support Grant. This is actually a close-out public hearing for the grant. MEDC does require that Lansing hold a close-out public hearing for the purposes of receiving comments on the final accomplishments of the MEDC, CBD, CDBGCV. Got it? MEDC, CDBGCV Small Business Support Grant, or SBSG, if you're following along at home. We do have to publish this and allow five calendar days prior to the scheduled public hearing to allow folks to provide input. Downtown Lansing, Inc. is here, as well as EDMP staff, to present on the accomplishments of the grant.
All right, and so if folks want to come on down to the well to speak about specifics in terms of accomplishments of the grant, we would appreciate that.
So we've got DLI speaking on MEDC, CDBGCV-G, if you're following.
I think we got it.
Got it? Okay.
It's good to see the two of you. Just make sure the green light is on, and the floor is yours.
There we go. Okay. Hi, I'm Barb Kimmel. I'm the Development Manager, and I'm here with Kathleen Edgerly from Downtown Lansing, Inc. Kathleen is going to prevent, or prevent, she's going to present information and accomplishments related to the CDBGCV grant from the Michigan Department of Economic Development.
Good evening. Just to recap briefly how the funds were awarded, so a CDBGCV grant was awarded in the amount of $1 million, provided by the MEDC to provide small businesses, to assist small businesses in the principal shopping district, primarily in District A. DLI was the recipient of those CDBGCV funds, and in order to apply, businesses had to demonstrate that they were negatively affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Out of the $1 million, just wanted to break it down, a total of $862,867.86, to be precise, was provided to small businesses via those funds, and then $129,520 was utilized by DLI to administer the program. And that included everything from staff time, to the materials and supplies that were needed, marketing, mailing, postage, et cetera. With the funds, we were able to support 18 businesses within our district with grants ranging up to 50,000. They were reimbursement-based grants based on the recommendations of the MEDC. For businesses who weren't recipients of the CDBG dollars, we were able to help support many others with other state-funded grant funds that we received, ARBA dollars, as well as private grants that we received as well. Overall, between multiple grant programs, we were able to support 43 different businesses with a total of over $1.8 million going into the hands of our local businesses within downtown. Because there was a question last time I was up here, I just wanted to answer that there were only six businesses who did not get approved for grants from DLI. This was due to not meeting application requirements, whether it was an incomplete application, they had over 50 employees, were a chain-related business, or they had a business, their business did not already meet a loan and fully expect to pass loan or grant. To go over to some of the requirements from CBG, the business had to be located within our District A of the principal shopping district. They had to be a business with fewer than 50 employees. They had to be in operation for at least one year in order to be eligible, sell products or have services that they offered face-to-face with a physical downtown storefront location, and open at least five days per week. They were awarded some extra points if they were open on weekends or during the evening hours. They had to have that business control over the site, whether they leased or owned their space. And then it was also important for us, as we went through the different scoring metrics, to make sure that by offering an equitable downtown experience, and knowing that for our local businesses, 60% of our downtown businesses are women-owned or ethnic-based business owners. So our goal was to ensure that we had at least 40% of the awarded applicants meet that criteria, the demographic, and we exceeded that and had 56% of the businesses that were award funds that were women or ethnic-owned businesses. Also, they had to show that they were in a self, their self-defined service area must be a primarily residential area in the City of Lansing, where at least 51% of the household income qualifies as low to moderate income, and the business revenue had to total $1 million or less. Just to go over really briefly, too, some eligible expenses that were outlined by HUD as well as MEDC. They could apply for grant funds to support items like payroll and operating costs, equipment costs, and inventory, expenses for professional design and layout of an interior or exterior space. They could cover items for non-permanent mobile outdoor patio or retail pop-up sale spaces, and expenses for general marketing, technology to assist in connecting with customers, operational charges, et cetera, were also covered by those grant funds. I know last time, too, there was a question regarding the review process, so I just wanted to go over that basic framework with all of you. Initially, when the applications came in, staff at DLI reviewed the application to ensure that it was complete, and that all of the required documentation was included with that application before it was sent on to our review committee. The review committee then scored applications based on the CDBG metrics and scoring criteria. Our review committee did include small business development experts, representatives from economic development agencies, local financial institutions, and our business development committee. They then scored all of the applications based on the metrics that I outlined here tonight, as well as the CDBG required metrics. And then we made sure that all applicants who were awarded grant funds received an award letter outlining what the award funds could be used on, and that total amount as well. That is a pretty basic overview for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, do we have any questions or comments from the body? Councilman Koss.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Kathleen, out of the 43 businesses that were aided, how many are still open today?
All of them but two.
That was my only question. Thank you.
All right, do we have other questions or comments? And I'm sorry, I missed the, did you ask of the 18, of the six that didn't meet the program requirements, or was it all 24? I missed it.
It was all 43. I think she said 43 businesses were.
Okay, because I guess I was curious, in terms of the 18 that were awarded, all those are still operational. And then the six that did not meet program requirements, are they all still operational?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
All right, do we have any council comments? Seeing none, just very quickly, I want to, I'm not going to steal Mr. Jay West-Thunder. I see him in the audience, so I'm assuming he's here to make a couple of community event announcements, so I will, I'll be brief. First, I want to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. It was incredibly well-attended. We learned about a number of economic development and infrastructure projects that are forthcoming for South Lansing. We learned about old initiatives such as Invest Health. We learned about new initiatives such as Lansing 360. And there were a partnership that the county has with Rip Medical Debt. The list goes on, but it was just a very, very well-attended meeting. A number of elected officials and area representatives on hand to meet folks where they're at and to be accessible, so we certainly appreciate that. If you weren't able to make it, our next constituent contact meeting is May 11th, from 10 to 12 noon. That's at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road, and we'd love to see you there. And then the other announcement is that the Loot and Rich Neighborhood Association Meeting will be meeting this week. That is Thursday at 7:00 PM. Those meetings take place at the Mayflower Church at 2901 West Mount Hall. Thank you.
Okay, I do have, just want to mention one more time that the election for the Charter Commission is coming up, May 7th. We have issued about a little over 17,000 ballots, so about 20% of the people who have received a ballot have returned it, so still time to get that back in. We've three weeks and one day, so get that in the mail, your ballot in the mail to us, or use one of our drop boxes, 14 located throughout the city. If you still need to get an absentee ballot, there's plenty of time for that as well. You can go to lansingvotes.gov and look at the Vote at Home tab. We will be having two days of early voting the weekend before the election, and of course, Election Day polls are open from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. And once again, any of the school district buildings where school takes place, the voters who vote in those locations will be relocated. We have sent notices to impacted voters, but you can also check on our website, again, lansingvotes.gov. And then our council intern, this is his last meeting, so Thomas Anthony Vitale, thank you for your time and dedication, and good luck in your future. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your events.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be holding the second of its two events this month in North Cemetery. From April 27th, from 9 until about noon, we will be holding a workshop on how to properly clean and what materials to properly use to clean monuments and markers in cemeteries, and then the participants will get their hands dirty and actually clean headstones for veterans in that cemetery. Materials and supplies are provided. It's a free course, and you do need to register online at our website at lansingsempfrends.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Every Wednesday night, when people are wondering about how to vote on the ballot that's coming up on May 7th, and have concerns about that, can go to Room B of the Lansing Downtown Library for a conversation with some of the candidates. Every Wednesday night, from 6 till 8.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Good evening. Jay West, Churchill Down Community Neighborhood Association President. We have our community meeting tomorrow at Alfreda Schmidt, 52, sorry, 5825 Rice Road, from 6 to 8. We also have a Lansing Charter Event on Wednesday at Alfreda Schmidt. We invited all the charter members to come out to speak to the community. You can interview the charter members yourself, get an idea of who you want to pick for charter, so that's going to be held at Wednesday as well at Alfreda Schmidt. We'd love to see as many of you out there as possible. Thank you.
Can I stop you real quick? What time is the event on Wednesday?
I'm sorry, 6 to 8.
6 to 8. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other community events?
So the thing at the library is not, she's talking about the same one, it's not every Wednesday, so I just wanted to make clear that. They had one on the 4th and the 10th, and I don't think they've scheduled another one yet, but I'm here to talk about Lansing 360, as you spoke about. We are just now opening our meeting up to the general public on Wednesday. It is via Zoom right now. Scheduled, we have Captain Prattle that will be here from the Lansing Police Department. We have Ben Shuldner, we have John Duane from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, that will be presenting, and Paul Elam from Advanced Peace that'll also be presenting. And I can't get in one minute what this is, but it's going to be the table that everybody's going to want to be at eventually, when it comes to gun violence prevention, and other tables that we're creating off of that. And that's Wednesday from 12 to 1:00 PM, and it's every other Wednesday. It's on Zoom. You can find us at thelansingempowermentnetwork.org, or Lansing Empowerment Network on Facebook, and we have the Empower Building Empowerment, damn it, I'll get it out later.
Thanks. All right, other community events?
Hello, I just happened to know the event he was trying to get out, so. We are inviting you all, public, to a special viewing party on April 20th. That's this Saturday, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Capital Area District Library, and that's the downtown branch in the auditorium. That is for the Lansing Empowerment Network. It's a viewing party. So we are asking folks to come in and experience firsthand the Lansing 360 Initiative, along with the Lansing Empowerment Network Initiative. At this event, you'll be able to hear highlights of our collaborative efforts showcased regarding the Lansing 360 Initiative, but also engage in conversation and discussion with fellow community members and stakeholders that have been a part of it up to this date. We'll also discover some new avenues for empowerment and network expansion, so folks that are wanting to figure out how they can get involved, how they fit into the Empowerment Network as a whole, that's going to be a conversation that we'll have. We'll also participate in some activities designed to foster connections and insights. So even if you haven't been a part of the journey up to this point, we ask that you join the movement, and we wanted to extend a personal invitation to council and to mayor for this Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other community events?
I'll try and be brief. I'm Tierson Walters. I'm the vice chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Board for Lansing, and this Thursday, the Neighborhood Resource Summit is going to be held at the aptly named Alfreda Schmidt Community Center on the South Side at 6:00 PM. Another special incentive of going to the program, if you are a child who is in the Lansing SAFE program, kindergarten through ninth grade, they're going to be depositing $10 in any accounts of students that attend, so hopefully we'll get a good crowd and be able to see resources come directly to you from the city and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? Okay, sounds like it's going to be a busy week or two. All right, with that, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Speakers will have up to three minutes, and legislative matters does include the scheduled public hearings, as well as the items that council will be acting on tonight. So that is items five through 14 on the printed council agenda. We'll give you about another minute to sign in, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I wanted to, while she's still here, congratulate...
I wanted to, while she's still here, congratulate Kathleen Edgely on a great job on the state of the downtown, we had a great group in the atrium building, I think a lot of folks who hadn't been there in a long time, so it was great to see that building, which is going to get significantly used, especially as we're going to see some incredible changes in our downtown, so great job to Kathleen. I want to remind everybody that the Capital City Film Festival is going on this week, and as apt, on Thursday, there will be a video on Little Arlington, featuring Alfreda Schmidt, and Sherri Jones, and a few others, that will be at the Central Methodist Church, so check out the Capital City Film Festival. I want to remind everyone, yard waste starts today, I think most people have put their bags out, but if you haven't, you are welcome to put it out, because we start collections this week. As always, I assume it'll be slow at first, because there's a lot of bags to collect, especially after such a beautiful weekend, but we will get our folks going. Tristan mentioned the Neighborhood Resource Summit on Thursday at Schmidt at six PM, thank you, sir. Saturday, April twentieth, is our next mobile food pantry, from nine AM to eleven AM at Lansing Catholic at five oh one Marshall. And finally, I wanted to make an announcement, something exciting that hasn't been announced yet, we have applied for and are receiving a My Core Stream Cleanup Grant. It's a grant that we applied for to cover scheduled downtown volunteer river cleanup days this summer and fall, and the state has granted our grant. I believe it'll be announced by the state in a few days by Eagle, and I was given clearance to let you all know this now, and certainly that's great, because we know there's a lot of efforts for river cleanup, and the funding that we get can only help further with downtown volunteers, so I'm glad to be able to announce positive news. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we are to public comment on legislative matters, as I indicated, that's items five through fourteen on the agenda, and items five, six, seven, and eight are all public hearings.
All right, on number five and six, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, we have a public hearing on two noise waivers for construction projects. The first one, number five, is for the Hoffman Brothers to work on Saturdays for the Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project that's ongoing. There's approximately two years or so of work, and to be able to work on Saturday would reduce the time, and they are requesting a noise waiver for that reason. And that's the public hearing on that one, or at least the information on it. As far as number six, the same thing, except for this is for the highways, I-496 and 127, there's work, they're requesting to work at night, because there's certain projects, it's called deck pouring apparently, where you have to do it in cool temperatures without traffic around. It's continuous work, so this one actually has to be night work to complete the job, at least that's what they told me, and that's information for those two noise waivers, special permits.
All right, we appreciate that, and seven and eight, I can't imagine have anything else to add, but Councilman Spatafor?
Not unless you want me to say the acronyms again.
I think we're all set, all right, thank you.
All right, first speaker we have tonight is Deidra Humphries Barker, followed by Jody Washington.
Good evening, Mr. Hussein, Mayor Shore, the rest of the council members. My name is Deidra Humphries Barker, and I am candidate for Lansing City Charter Commission, one of thirty-six candidates, that's a robust response from the city. I'm also a resident of the East Side. As I move about the city campaigning for Charter Commission, I'm often asked, what is the charter? And that's a reasonable question, because it's been nearly fifty years since there's been a Charter Commission, and the charter itself is that invisible background that we have that holds our city to order, telling us how we're going to operate.
Ma'am, are you speaking on
I am.
the public hearings?
Yes. I have two minutes, sixteen seconds. So I, you've kind of messed me up there, Mr. Swope, but I will continue. It's because of the charter that I got this card in the mail about the public hearing, because the charter provides for it, so I'm in support of that, and I'm in support of the waiver, because it will cut twenty-four days, or about five work weeks, from the construction on Michigan Avenue. Now, my neighbor might not be too happy about it, because they're expecting a new baby in June, and so here you're going to have noise six days of the week, keeping the baby up in the day, and then the baby keeping up the parents at night. But I do think it's a good move to try to cut that time in half and finish the project in time for Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, and next we have Jody Washington, followed by Mike Lynn. You're going to pass, okay, Mike Lynn then.
And so that invite was to Wednesday's meeting, actually, Mayor, and it's via Zoom, so it's pretty simple to get in there, but you are definitely invited, as well as all of council. My question, or my conversation is about number thirteen and fourteen. Number thirteen, Samantha Harkins, being named to the Powder Park Zoo Board, and I don't have any, I don't have any feelings either way on that, I mean, outside of what we've heard, I don't know her personally or anything about her personally, but I will say, her proximity to the mayor should question you all on how that process goes. This might be a very easy point of transparency to say who all applied, as a council, before you vote on this and vote her through, just very simply, who all applied for this, I'd like to know that. Again, somebody so close who used to be our deputy mayor, you know, being named to this park board, I feel like it's just a simple transparency mode to say, hey, who all applied? You might find some of the people you know in your neighborhood applied for this and never got an interview, or how that process went. Obviously, with the charter, we were looking to change these types of appointments and how they get made, but to see that name shoot through, skyrocket through the process as quickly as it did, and be honest, I would definitely ask that question. And then when it comes to Gregory Venker, there's a lot of conversation about, you know, whether or not he's fit to be, or whatever the case is, and he got sent off, and so on and so forth, I believe that he's probably fit to be a city attorney somewhere. Jeffrey Brown asked a question earlier about the resolution you guys put through, saying May sixth on it, not June thirtieth, as you guys said that that process could take up to that time, or that's how long Smirker's going to be here. I think it's important that question was asked, because I think what's going to end up happening is you guys aren't going to get a process when it comes to a city attorney, and May sixth is going to come, and they're going to say, we don't have any time per our resolution, we're naming the interim. And I hope you guys don't allow that to happen. Ultimately, again, I think he's probably really fitted to be a city attorney someplace, just maybe not here, because he's probably one of our longest-tenured city attorneys we have here, meaning that he's been here throughout the whole last six years of corruption. The same stuff you all fought against last year during all these processes, when you got threatened, and so on and so forth. He wasn't the one doing it, but also was in that room, and I always look at it, even as I worked in the fire department, if I see something, speak on it. No matter if it puts me in a position where I'm going to lose my job for it, or whatever the case is, if you see something that ain't right, you're in a position of power, and if you can say something, you should. So all the things that you all seen, this council that's seen, what was coming out of that city attorney's office, and all the things that we've seen from the city attorney's office, period, he was there for that, so I think new blood is needed, I think somebody coming in from out of town, just like we tried to do with LPD, you know, and we did with LFD, right, we brought Sturdivan in, who's been awesome, been amazing, he didn't have any of the baggage, or any of the old battle buddy scars on him, that he had to keep quiet about anything, he was able to come in here and actually make difference, and I think we should do the same thing for our city attorney's office, so question those two things, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are to the referral of the public hearings, the items five and six.
Both of those will be referred back to city operations.
And item seven, the CDBG.
Committee of the whole.
And item eight, the CDBG CD.
So with this one, that was actually the final action, in terms of the public hearing, MBDC has a policy where it has to be a public hearing, so that, number one, the public can hear about the accomplishments, and then, number two, we can ask questions, as well as the public, so with that said, we will move to place that on file.
Okay, then with that, we are to ordinances for passage, and hang on one second, I have to get my I have to read into the record. Sorry about that, we switched the order on this and caught me unawares. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to add Chapter eight eighty-seven of the Lansing Codified Ordinances, Sections eight eighty-seven point zero one to eight eighty-seven point zero seven, to authorize a payment in lieu of taxes program in conformity with the State of Michigan Property Tax Exemption Alternative authorized under nineteen sixty-six PA three forty-six as amended specifically MCL one twenty-five point fourteen fifteen A, which permits a city to elect to consider a payment in lieu of taxes for a housing project developed or rehabilitated for workforce housing after the passage of an enabling ordinance. As read a second time by its title, the ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning, and is on the order of immediate passage.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Okay, thank you, and as the clerk stated, it's an ordinance that allow, that would allow a payment in lieu of taxes program in conformity with the State of Michigan Property Tax Exemption Alternative, which permits a city to elect to consider a payment in lieu of taxes for a housing project development or rehabilitation for housing after the passage of an enabling ordinance. We did look at this in the committee with Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen, which he explained, he had a presentation on March eleventh, instead of public hearing for March eighteenth, and there wasn't any too much public comment, and tonight, we're up for passage.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further questions, comments? The only thing I think I would add, a couple things, number one, remember that this is an opt-in, right, so the statutory framework is such, that communities can opt into this. A couple communities have opted in, but this is relatively new, so we would be one of the pioneer communities, that's number one. Number two, and I just want to underscore that any pilot request, and it was already discussed, but any pilot request under this particular ordinance would have to come before council. And so, again, the idea is to allow for, typically, when we look at pilot requests, you're looking at requests that deals with AMI up to eighty percent, or it would have to have some type of federal aid designation, or LI-TEC designation, and so this allows for us to actually provide for a pilot for housing that targets families that are making up to a hundred twenty percent of the AMI. So with that being said, Clerk Swope, would you please take the role?
Certainly, on passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Pelavonaglu. Councilmember Spatafor. Seven yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted, is there a motion for immediate effect?
There a motion for immediate effect?
Motion for immediate effect.
All right, motion on the table, further discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action, item eleven is an administrative review fee for the pilot, the ordinance we just passed.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, the office, city attorney and administration worked to establish an appropriate fee that could be ratified by council, the foregoing considered staff time spent in respect of pilot requests over the last three years. The fee will be charged at the time of application, and will be non-refundable, whether council approves the eventual pilot or not, because of the significant staff time that would occur. And, like, motion, make a motion.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion? I think the only thing I would add is that the Department of Economic Development and Planning, in concert with city attorney's office, is now also looking to see if there's a way to attach a fee to your traditional pilot request, with the same staff time, obviously, and the same cost as incurred by the city. So with that being said, seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We are to the appointment of Carrie Tomac to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board of Directors.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, we had, Carrie seems, she's here tonight, come on down. We had her up and for the board, for the business representative of Downtown Lansing Inc. Board of Directors to expire for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. She has been very involved, and a resident of Lansing fifteen years, very involved in downtown in numerous roles, not only volunteering, but professionally, and has a background in marketing and advertising, and comes with a recommendation from a local business, saying that she'd be a great candidate, so with that being said, I'm a motion for, to approve.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we'll get you sworn in.
Step right up to the mic and turn and face the audience. And if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Downtown Lansing Inc. Board Member.
Of the office of Downtown Lansing Inc. Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, while she signs, we have an additional appointment, this is for Samantha Harkins, is a City of Lansing member of the Powder Park Zoo Board, for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, and we did have Ms. Harkins, and interviewed her as well, we did ask a few questions with her background of being formerly connected to the city, she said she did not have any contracts, or was not providing services to the City of Lansing. She comes with a background of serving in different executive roles in Lansing, and she stated her reasoning was that she's very involved with the parks, with her family, and really was encouraged by the park board to join, because they're there as a parent, and so. With that, we motion for approve.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, are there further questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, and I do not believe Ms. Harkins is here tonight.
She is not. We next have the item fourteen, the appointment of Greg Venker as the interim city attorney.
Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, this is a pretty easy resolution, the mayor has appointed Greg Venker as interim city attorney for a period from April first through May sixth, this resolution affirms that appointment. I so move it.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, any questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, with that, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that's the yellow sheet in the back with tag, we'll give you another minute to sign in, if you have not already done so, and in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilman Spatafor.
Mr. President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and proper referrals be made by the president.
There's a motion on the floor, any questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Sorry, place on file.
And we have a resolution with a number of reappointments.
Committee of the whole.
We have grant acceptance for Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth Climate Action Fund.
Ways and Means.
And a grant acceptance for the Revitalization and Placemaking Two Point O program.
Ways and Means.
We have a State Disaster Contingency Fund reimbursement.
Ways and Means.
Hazard Mitigation Plan, twenty twenty-four.
Public Safety.
And two items relative to orders to make safer demolish at one fifteen Regent Street.
Both will go to public safety.
And a sole source purchase for Lansing Police Department for Mr. David Carter as the vendor for management analysis at traffic stops.
Ways and Means.
Communications and petitions, we have a communication from Jessica Hayden, one from Alex Boomis, one from Jamal Dilman-Hasso, one from Sarah Doan, one from Christopher Green-Zamansky, and one from Jason Sherman-Brown. from Christopher Green-Zamanski, and one from Jason Sherman-Brown, and Ryan, one from Ryan Putz, Carla Alschwede, and also Mike Dombrowski, all in favor of the Martin Luther King Boulevard reconfiguration. We also have received a written communication since the agenda was closed from Jordan Hager to the same effect.
All right. Place on file.
And then we have, we are to motion of excuse absence.
All right. Councilman Spatafor.
Move to excuse Councilmember Carter.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Council members, additional remarks. Oh, wait. Councilman Brown.
Let me add here, there was a, just a brief, I got a message. There is a Churchill Downs Association Neighborhood Garage Sale, May 18th on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Churchill Downs Community Association, May 18th, Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They didn't want anyone to miss out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Okay. We are to public comment on city government-related matters, then. Speakers have up to three minutes. First, we have David Ellis, followed by Deborah Devine.
Hi. David Ellis, resident of downtown. I was wanting to have a very brief comment sort of on both the city's planned budget for this year as well as the general vibe around Operation Slowdown. I heard at the mayor's city, State of the City address that it's, he's considering it to be a large success of a program, and they're continuing with doing their traffic radars around the city. But looking at the actual Operation Slowdown portion of the website, that's not what the project originally really was. It was a project where you could submit a street for speed counts to be taken and potentially have traffic calming put on the road. Looking at the petition list, there, I had said 2020 earlier, it doesn't look like there's been a single street approved for traffic calming since 2018. It looks like they're saying they're aiming for three streets per year, but that's none for the past five or six years now. So, looking at the budget, there's no, there's nothing being put in for it to improve this program or sort of reignite it, which is a bit of a disappointment, especially telling that pedestrian death rates are up over 100% in the state of Michigan since 2018. And if you look at our major roads in the city, crash rates are up 100% since 2013. I actually had had a bit of a discussion online with Adam Hussein about that, including MLK and Cedar Streets. On the topic of making the streets safer, we've had Downtown Lansing Inc. already post a study saying that we need to be focusing on making our downtown a more livable and safe, walkable place, so this is not in line with their own goals. And I know we are, I believe, increasing the size of our police force, which might help offset, it won't, it won't help it at all. I've, I have many wonderful, beautiful photos of Lansing police cars stopping on crosswalks, blowing through red lights. I have two complaints with the police department, one for when I was almost hit at that roundabout by the police pickup truck, and then one for a sheriff who ran a red light, not because he was in a hurry to get anywhere, because he stopped at the very next one, but just because he didn't want to stop at that one. Finally, because I'm, again, I don't have a whole lot of things I do outside of here other than my own crazy antics, I decided to count 50 cars at the roundabout one block from the police station to see how many of them actually stopped for the stop sign. Big red-orange octagon that says "stop" on it. It should be the simplest thing in the world for a driver to understand. Forty-two cars did not stop, and I was being completely generous in what I was saying. Stop. If they slowed down enough, I said that was, I counted that as a stop. I'm not going to say who it was, but one of the cars that did not stop was one of you guys sitting in front of me right now. I'm not saying who, but they were the driver of a silver Chevy Traverse with a Lansing sticker on the back, left side of the window.
Thank you.
At 1:32 p.m. last Monday.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Devine, followed by Carol Skilling.
My name is Deborah Devine. I live in the West Side neighborhood on Dinsmore, and I'm speaking on Martin Luther King and a whole series of failure.
Could you, could you pull the mic down just a little bit? Thank you.
I'm sure. So, I'm calling on the failure of the communication between the city and the neighborhoods on the west side on almost every project they've started in that area since last year, starting with trying to take our triangles out, removing the light at Genesee, and now Martin Luther King, where I have to find out from neighbors that you're redoing Martin Luther King. To add insult to injury, I didn't read, receive the notice on voting on which Martin Luther King plan we're looking at now until late Wednesday night. I spent two days trying to get ahold of the city to find out information, and no one has called me back. So I sent my comments in today. But I'm really appalled to see nine people supporting Martin Luther King and not one person mentioned, who I know have contacted the city, with questions that remain unanswered. Noise, safety, speed, and environmental issues that haven't been addressed to the neighborhood. Yet, we're going ahead and tearing out the berms that were put in there with help with the D, the old DNR and whatever it's called these days, on noise control and speed, back when Martin Luther King was five lanes, four lanes and a turn lane. And now we're back, going back to that, and nobody's addressed it. The communication is not good. Several of the people I thought were here, I know the city because I've been copied on some very lengthy emails to you, Mayor Shore, from Deborah Malcahy, on the issues that need to be addressed, and nobody seems to be getting answers. But to give, be given two days to vote on which Martin Luther King scenario we want, when I only received it Wednesday and it purportedly went out the 5th of April, my envelope was postmarked the 8th. So there was no way to contact anybody and get answers to these questions. We still don't understand in the neighborhood why they have to be totally removed, and that it could have been better addressed if the city had talked to the neighbors before they sent it out to bid, had plans drafted. And I know several of the council members came to the March meeting and listened to us. We still don't have answers to those questions. And we're very concerned when one of my neighbors tells me her children who bike a lot won't even cross Martin Luther King because they're afraid to cross it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol Skilling, followed by Mitzi Allen.
Hello. I hate public speaking, but I'm here because I feel strongly about the MLK Boulevard removal. And I wrote a nice memo to you and Mayor Shore about traffic volume, environmental concerns, beautification, environmental justice, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and creating vacant land. And it's this last piece that I want to address a little further. So there's going to be, what I understand, two acres of public space, green space removed, in favor of 1.5 acres pushed over to the side on the west side of MLK if the construction goes through. So I have a lot of questions about this green space, just like my neighbors have questions. What will this green space look like? Who will maintain it? I understand that MDOT will own it, so is MDOT going to put down commercial grass seed and bring their, bring their big commercial mowers in, and it's just going to be grass? Will the city plant new trees there? Will it be a park? Does Park and Recreation know about this? Lots and lots of questions. What you can't say is that this land will stay in MDOT ownership forever. That is not the case. MDOT has a process by which they dispose of land, just like DNR does. That process includes waiting a year or two after the construction goes through, and then someone applies to purchase the land. When that, let's say, for instance, a neighboring landowner, like a developer, applies to purchase the land. What then happens is that MDOT will go through and review that land to see if it's considered excess. Do they need that for any more roadwork? Remember, it's pushed aside and it's vacant. Maybe they don't. If it's considered excess, then they consider the sale of the property. And they look at whether or not there's going to be development as maybe perhaps a positive thing. What I want to know is what the city will do at that point in time if that happens, and where will the city stand if that land is to be sold. So I have lots of questions, and if this is going to be publicly and forever, then I'd like to see some safeguards for that. Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Mitzi Allen, followed by Jody Washington.
Hi. My name is Mitzi Allen, and I'm here to talk about the reconfiguration of Martin Luther King. I'm not in favor of the proposed plan to reduce six lanes of traffic to four, to move the lanes closer to the west side of MLK, thereby reducing property values, removing the barriers that were meant to ensure pedestrian safety and to protect against the noise and pollution and speed. I'm deeply concerned about the lack of transparency and fairness in the city's approach to gather public opinion in the reconfiguration plan. It's frustrating when process meant to involve the community ends up feeling exclusionary and rushed. Last week, the city engaged in what could best be described as a smoke-blowing exercise meant to, meant more to appease those in opposition than to gather information. Under the pretense of conducting a residential poll, postcards were mailed to 1,600 people on the west side neighborhood. However, there are 2,000 homes with mailing addresses within the neighborhood, meaning that everyone had an opportunity to participate in the poll. It further complicates the matter when the cards were dated April 5th and didn't allow adequate time for residents to educate themselves, gather pertinent facts, weigh the facts, and reach a decision before the due date of April 12th. It becomes even more complicated when it appears that the residents east of MLK in the Renaissance neighborhood did not receive the cards at all. Perhaps it was felt because the plan favors those living on the east side with a non-connected bank path, a one-mile walking path, and they didn't need to cast an opinion. Another flaw in this poll was that only one card was received per address, meaning that families could not cast more than one poll. The postcards contain language for more information or to leave a comment electronically. Please visit lansingmichigan.gov. Once you did that, there was no poll that you could take. That was just worthless. When the city engages in practices such as this poll, it creates doubt and untrust. I'm requesting the city to slow down, to reconsider their approach, and ensure that all voices are heard before moving forward with any major change regarding the reconfiguration. I'm wondering how the council members or even the mayor would feel if Mr. Swob only sent out ballots to 60% of the population. Community trust is essential to the success of any urban planning initiative, and it's crucial that the process reflect that. Please reconsider your approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jody Washington, followed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Jody Washington. Excuse me, my voice is not doing well. I'm going to start this by saying I am really encouraged by what Mike Lynn talked about with the Lansing 360. But I am going to address one of the golden calves in this city, and that's Advanced Peace. When Jeremy announced last week that he had read that they had gone to Paris to Disney World, I was shocked. I think everybody talks about how wonderful this group is, and I was here when they did their presentation in which they said nothing. They wouldn't tell who the kids were, they wouldn't tell how they picked them, they wouldn't tell what their risk factor was, they wouldn't give us data on anything that they have squelched. Because the reality is, gun violence is down nationwide. It spiked during the pandemic. The reality is, we are not Chicago, Detroit, New York City. We are Lansing. We don't have ghettos. Do I want the gun violence down? Of course I do. But let's not pretend we're living in a massive crime city. We aren't. Having said that, I went to Advanced Peace's webpage. They have gone to San Francisco, Washington DC, New York City, Mexico City, Cape Town, Dubai, London, and Paris with an average of eight trips a year. Now, is this for the kids or is it for the adults that would like to travel? What we're talking about, I believe, the tune of a million dollars. This is what we're spending it on? They can go to a Tigers baseball game, they can go to Lake Michigan, and as far as getting them out of their neighborhood, stop. We live in Lansing. We are 35 to 37 square miles. We are not a massive city. They connect them to social services. All the agencies connect them to social services. Again, where are they getting these kids? From their church? From their neighborhoods? From their homes? I don't know where they're getting them from because they wouldn't tell us. They were the least transparent presentation I had, one of the least that I have ever witnessed, sitting here, and everybody just, because it's a golden calf. I would ask that in the future, when we give money to these types of organizations, for God's sakes, find out what they're really doing, because this is disgusting. Nobody should be traveling the world like that. I don't care who you are. Most people cannot travel like that, and they're doing it on our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Belinda Fitzpatrick, followed by Willie Hobbs.
Belinda Fitzpatrick, 224 South Home Street. I haven't been down here too much because my attorney thinks the less communication with the city of Lansing, well, we're in litigation, the better. But my friend, Michelle Fickes, F.I.C.K.E.S., is running to be on the Charter Commission, and so I wanted to give her my endorsement. She's pictured here with Alfreda Schmidt, and it says, "I'm voting for my dear friend, Michelle Fickes, on May 7th. She will do the job. Vote for her." So, in memory of Alfreda, I ask people, vote for Michelle. I also will endorse my neighbor, Jerry Norris. I just love his creative chaos. Now, I want to share an experience I had that goes to the red tagging, that I really wish people would take this bull by the horn and do something about this particular aspect of the whole thing. I had scheduled an appointment to have Hager Fox come in and do a free maintenance on a furnace I had put in a year ago. Well, the, the tech left because the tag on the house says "on safe to enter." I called the manager. The manager told me that it's, that he was told by city staff that if a contractor goes into a red-tagged house, they could be fined and arrested. Okay. So when we red-tag houses, is this about getting them repaired, or is this about getting that, making it impossible for them to get repaired? Because why would a city staff person be telling a contractor, "They can't go into a house to do repairs without risking fines or jail"? No. I really am concerned about apartments, apartments, apartments. We're building too many apartments, as this one homeless guy told me. That's why people are becoming homeless, which is counterintuitive. But please drive by Homes and Prospect and see the ghetto windows that developer Farren Forsberg has put into that property. She took out those elegant windows that are arched, and she- and she's putting ghetto-type windows instead. Please just drive by and take a look. Thank you.
Next, we have Willie Hobbs, and then Elizabeth Rice.
I know what they done with these houses. How y'all done? They trying to take them. And they got a lot of, I'm like, my man right there, O'Han, the president, the vice president. He gave me a big wood. I speculate. I don't like to speculate, but Lansing committed and code compliant, they ain't done me justice at all. Now, I done told y'all this, the city charged me for my property just because I have a Chicago address. He know about it. And I told that code-compliant guy before he even went in my yard. I told him, I just left Chicago, I had some business to take care of. I said, "Give me a little more time." I cleaned my property up. I put some of my stuff away in my sheds in the garage. "No, no, no. We are here now. We are here now." I told him, "Well, look, Mr., you taking all of my good stuff." I said, "I'm gonna call the police." "Well, call the police." I called them. Police told me, "Let them do their job. Fight it in court." I ain't through with this. Snowball gonna go rolling here in a minute. Because if I don't get no help here, I'm gonna walk the ladder. I'm gonna do J.L. John Pollard and Donnie O'Han. I'm gonna come down here, I'm gonna talk until I die. I'm not going nowhere, because I don't like the way I've been treated my whole life. My whole life. Ever since the 40th part of the 60s, I've been railroaded by the system. Excuse me, sir. Will you show them, please, to Mr. Jackman over there? All the rest of y'all seen them. Some of y'all wasn't here. I brought the empty trucks, and I brought the full trucks. Now, and none of that stuff that they took from me, which they didn't take, they stole. They stole through a letter from the city, put all this stuff. I had, out of all they said that I was, my property was rental property. I paid all that tax up. Now they done stuck me with this tax, $4,000 and some odd dollar. What do these people think I'm made of, a bank? Somebody need to help me, please. I'm begging. I'm begging for help. I can't sleep at night. I'm under a lot of pressure, lot of stress.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Rice, followed by Norma Bauer.
Evening, folks. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. Libby Rice, I'm here to tell you, I love Lansing. I bought myself a new t-shirt to let you know that. And I love Lansing, and because of that, I'm also letting you know I do not want either of the options of the one- to two-way conversion, Aligon and Otis Streets. Please, go back to the drawing board. Do not take away any part of our medians on Martin Luther King Boulevard. And I want to ask, as many people more articulate than I have asked, how did you arrive at this? I learned about it a few weeks before the postcards were delivered. So how did this come to be? I think four months ago, our West Side Neighborhood Association got the news, and we asked for some meetings. Four months! And then we get a postcard last week, giving us two options. You know, it's just, it's baffling to me. How have we arrived here? Anyway, back to the point. I love Lansing. I love this town. I would not want to live anywhere else in mid-Michigan. This was a choice. But this neighborhood has gone through hell for the past 60 years. Remember, I-496 ripped a chasm through this part of Lansing, the heart of Lansing, as well as our west side. And you know what happened? From there, we went to the Capitol Loop. I guess that was to revitalize downtown. And if I'm understanding things, that's when we redid the streets. Okay, okay. You took houses on both occasions, right? You took a lot fewer on the capital city loop. But that's when you put in the medians and all the reconfiguring of streets. What the hell is going on? Why do we need this? Where's the cost-benefit analysis? Where's the citizen engagement? Where's the data for traffic, for safety, for noise reduction? And I'm only here because that's the way to talk to you, sir. I don't believe it's a city council matter anymore. I'd been told that. Thank you very much, and I apologize for any emotionalism.
Next, we have Norma Bauer, followed by Mike Lynn.
Okay. I want to apologize, because when I learn better, I do better. And when I put down that I wanted to talk about Regent Street, I mistakenly assumed that it was about Dave Muley's remediation of a lot of old houses up by the Cottage Lane development that he finally got approved. So, but since I'm at it, I might as well say that imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. So when I hear three men saying that the Lansing Community Alliance is not meeting tomorrow night, I have not learned that from any members of the Lansing Community Alliance. And I have since had a nice chat with Guillermo Lopez, who didn't seek the endorsements from the Chamber of Commerce, and who is a well-known and well-admired person throughout the Capitol area because of his service on the school board and on the big Memorial Day Latino celebration, and in support of his church at fundraisers. He's a great guy. I've seen him serve on the Lansing Police Department Commission, appointed by the mayor. And he asks probing questions, because he understands the city charter, and he's worked under it. And he knows what works and what hasn't really been working too well. And that's why, after 12 years, it's probably time to look at it, find out what works, and maybe what needs to be updated. So I personally am endorsing him. I don't necessarily quibble with anybody else on the Lansing Community Alliance. I think they're all great people, and I know them all pretty well. But I just hope everybody will consider voting for them, because they're focused on community. And to have three men tell me that they're not meeting tomorrow night, when nobody on that committee has told me that they're meeting, they're not meeting tomorrow, I just think maybe they have another agenda going on, that they would hold their own meeting about the City Charter Review Commission on a Wednesday night. And that's one of the things that I don't like about the endorsements that the chamber gave. It seems to all be white guys in ties who like being employed, because the mayor keeps giving them their employer's money. Great big grants keep them employed, putting up big apartment buildings that are going to charge the rent that's too high, and other developments. Excuse me. But they don't do much about warming centers or charging extra taxes to the vacant commercial properties that have been vacant for three months. There's all kinds of things that could be addressed. They're not being addressed by the chamber endorsements.
Thank you. Next is Mike Lynn, followed by Deborah Mulcahy.
I am a man, and I did tell you all, it's not happening tomorrow, and that's true. Outside of that, I don't know what else to say. No secret agendas. But I want to talk about Lansing 360, and Wednesday's meeting for Lansing 360, and why it's important to even the conversation Jody just came up here with. I think that when we're dealing with gun violence, prevention, intervention, support, and enforcement, we need to have facts. And things that she said are factual, they have taken those trips. I'm not going to defend it. Come to meeting Wednesday, because they're going to be there to speak on this particular item. I think it's important, and that's why 360 is going to be an important table, because it can kind of get rid of those conversations out in the air that kind of fester and can make work hard for people, man. When I was doing intervention work, I was one of the only people doing it, and rumors like that could ruin me out here in the streets. So just be mindful of that part. And I think that Wednesday will be a good meeting for people to come to to get the truth of what it is, and take it with a grain of salt from that point. But that's what the Lansing 360 is. It's a table, a community-driven table on gun violence prevention. So it'll be, we are setting the table as community members and asking those that are involved in gun violence prevention to come and tell us what it is you're doing. When the streets blow up like they did last week, there's really no place you can go and find out, what is Advanced Peace doing about this right now? Are they intervening? How are they intervening? You know, the Villas Lansing, us, what are we doing about this stuff that's going on? What programs do we have that are going to acutely address these issues? When dollars come into the city, are those dollars being allocated because we have relationships with these people, or because they're doing the work and doing it well? I think all of that's important, man, when we're talking about this, about really being intentional about this. And we have partnered with, Michigan State's in this conversation, LFD has been in the conversation, anybody and everybody who has something to do with gun violence. We've had multiple council members there. We're going to be on the Public Safety Committee next week. Thank you, guys, for that, to talk to you guys about what this is. Again, it's going to be the table. Right now, there's probably 15 tables around gun violence. Everybody is popping a table up to be, you know, I don't want to say important, but in the center of this conversation, and nothing's getting done. Really, people that are involved in gun violence prevention are like, "I'm sick of going to meetings. I've got seven meetings I got to show up to, this pastor's group, and this teacher's, and this, this." And so there's just one table that we're asking all those individuals to come and ask your questions. As a community, come ask your questions. These meetings have been going on for seven months. They've been highly productive. We've had community conversation about what we can do, about hotspots in the community. Again, Mayor, I know we've had our differences, but this is not about us. This is something that across the country, there's four other cities that are doing this, Kansas City, Tulsa, Columbus, Georgia, and obviously Omaha, that their mayor and all their council and everybody's involved, they're trying to get this thing done organically and not playing around with it. So I think it's time for us to look past all the differences we might have and really start moving this forward. So Wednesday, 12 to 1, Lansing 360. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, and finally is Deborah Mulcahy.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, we had an unexpected delay. Peter, go ahead.
Peter Olomah. I live on the west side. I want to read a very short statement. This is what I submitted electronically to Public Services Division on April 11th. We received a letter and postcard in the mail on Monday, April 8th, 2024. The postcard requested that it be returned by Friday, April 12th.
Sir, could you pull the mic down just a little bit? Thank you.
There was not sufficient information or any data that could be reviewed to allow an informed decision with respect to two options listed in the postcard. Therefore, I do not support either option. A full environmental impact study should be performed using current data and studies before presenting various alternatives to the public. The alternatives should include a detailed analysis of a no-build alternative, which is a fundamental basis of an environmental impact statement.
Deborah Mulcahy, I live in the same house with him. Had I received responses to my multiple requests to the mayor, I wouldn't be wasting any of our time tonight. I did get my first response today, and it said, "They've received my multiple requests." My request was, "Mr. Mayor, show us you're a strong leader. Mr. Mayor, will you have a facilitated dialogue with the citizens, showing us you're a strong leader?" The traffic signal lights are one of the reasons the city of Lansing wanted to do what? Have jurisdiction. We get the $40,000 light. The people south of I-496 get the $150,000 light. We get the Hugo, they get the BMW. "Mr. Mayor, show us you're a strong leader. Have discussion with us." Where are the traffic studies? I made four requests. They want me to pay for them. This is what staff told me was available. Where are the environmental documents? Oh, we forgot about those. We, the city of Lansing, created those documents ourselves. Oh, thank you, neighbors, for telling us that we had them. Was that intentional, or was that stupidity? "Mr. Mayor, show us you're a strong leader. Let's participate in a facilitated community mediation, discussion, even if it's not mediation." Many people in the community believe that the removal of the medians will make MLK safer. That's the city's job to educate people. Where is the data showing it will be safer? It hasn't been documented. The public has not been educated. The 1990 noise levels with four lanes of traffic were not acceptable to the governments, the different governments that studied them. Why would five lanes of traffic without medians be acceptable? "Mr. Mayor, come to the table. Let's have community dialogue." Where's the rush? Hold down the project. What's the problem with waiting and analyzing things? Our community, historically, significantly greater population of people of color and economically disadvantaged. Our community, has it been an easy target, or was it by design? Historically, our governments have gotten away with working to destroy our community. Enough. "Mr. Mayor, please come to the table and have a community facilitated discussion." And if it pleases council, since you have another neighbor present who would like to speak, we would like this highly prized.
We cannot stretch the rules in that manner, but I do appreciate you coming up to the podium to speak. With no business before the body, we are adjourned at 8:26.